Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being part of our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Now, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Kathy Pucci?
Here.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Here.
Sue Grodek?
Ah, she's absent this evening. Excused.
Ron Benkirk?
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Here.
Andy Silver.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Let's pray. Father, we are grateful again for the chance that we have together as a city council this evening. Lord, we thank you for this time of year where we're once again able to celebrate Christmas and for what that means to each and every family in our city. And we thank you for this time of year. It's always special. Lord, we do pray for those that are hurting right now, that are going through a loss of a loved one. We think specifically of the Tansky family, the loss of Gina's mom. It's always difficult to lose a loved one, Lord, but it's certainly even more difficult around the holidays. So we pray that you would please comfort the Tansky family, Lord, as well as those in our city who are walking the same path. Or we pray that you would please bless our meeting tonight, help us to make decisions for the betterment of our city. Or please bless this holiday as we once again celebrate the birth of your son. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. At this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on November 22nd, 2021. Are there any comments or questions regarding those minutes? I'll make a motion that we approve.
To approve, Kathy Pucci?
Steen.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Benkirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Silver.
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is saying they're safe, the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer. We will now move on then with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Finance Committee. We did meet this evening at 6:15, as we always do prior to the start of the committee. The whole meeting discussed the following. Ordinance 2021-33 is up for a third reading and adoption. We will be amending this ordinance this evening, and this is an ordinance to make appropriations for current and other expenditures in the city for the period January 1 to December 31, 2021. And Mr. Raguz will explain those changes when he gives his reports a bit later. So to avoid redundancy, we'll let him explain those a bit later in our meeting. Ordinance 2021-34, this is to make appropriations for expenditures for next year, January 21 to December 31, 2022, for the city. We discussed this at our Budget Work Session a month or so back, as well as our last two council meetings. The general fund appropriations are just shy of 16.4 million, and total effects on all funds is just shy of 32.4 million, and that is for 2022. Ordinance 2021-35, this amends current ordinance 2020-48, and this is providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employees in non-bartering the city of Brooklyn. And there was a wage schedule that was prepared by the administration based upon a compensation study that was done a while back, and this wage schedule change would update it based upon that study. And it was again explained at the prior council meeting, as well as our Budget Work Session. If the public is interested, they can also go on Board Docs, and the entire schedule is listed there. Next is ordinance 2021-36. This is deterring the percentages of gross receipts from the Brooklyn Municipal Income Tax to be deposited into the various funds, the General Fund, the Capital Improvement, as well as the Capital Reserve Funds, and that is 84%, 15%, and 1% respectively. All of those, we will pass this evening on third reading. Resolution 2021-38 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is to approve an application with the City of Brooklyn to apply for the Community Development Lot Grant Funds for the Recreation Center Mark Court Park Improvement Phase Two, and that is for an amount of $150,000. If we are awarded that grant, those funds would go to improving Mark Court Park. Ordinance 2021-38 is updating the Capital Improvement Plan for this year. These updates also are for Mark Court Park. The restrooms there, we had originally discussed having some type of prefabricated new structure put up there. There's been a change, and we are now going to upgrade the current facility, and so that's going to be an increase in cost. However, there were some funds, some budgeted funds, on the rink and pool side of the rec center that were not going to be used this year, and so those funds were just transferred over to the parks, and there is no change in the overall budgeted amount. Ordinance 2021-39, we will have to amend as well, and this is the Capital Improvement Plan for 2022, and that change adds $100,000 to the Capital Improvement Plan for a truck and a trailer for the police department. And then lastly, that was the last item for Finance Committee. Again, that takes place at 6:15 prior to the start of all council meetings. All are welcome to attend. We'll now move on with Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on December 20th in the Rec Center Meeting Room, 7:00 p.m. Close my report.
Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals this evening, Mrs. Ryan Shaki.
The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on Thursday, December 16th, at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. They will listen to requests from Ellet Signs for two additional illuminated channel letter signs for Five Guys at 4824 Ridge Road, permanent parcel 43315009. A request from Ellet Signs for an additional 17.2 square foot, square feet to allowable 80 square feet for an illuminated channel letter signs for Five Guys at the same address. And finally, a request from Michelle Rivera for a variance of five feet to the required five feet from the rear lot line for an accessory structure at 7412 Dalbank, permanent parcel 43123042, and any other business that may become, may come before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. The Planning Commission met on Wednesday, December 1st, at 6:00 p.m. and heard the following two requests: A request from Ellet Signs for an illuminated channel letter sign for Five Guys, as Mrs. Ryan Shaki just mentioned, at 4824 Ridge Road, and also a request for median signs for an illuminated monument sign for the avenue at 4700 Idlewood Drive. Both of these were approved. The Committee of the Whole met following the Finance Meeting just prior to this council meeting and discussed the following. Resolution 2021-37 is up for a third reading this evening, and this would extend the moratorium that's already in place in the city for the granting of building permits for any building structure use or change of use that would enable the construction of storage units or self-storage facilities, and that's for a period not to exceed 180 days. That moratorium is already in place. We want to extend that while we continue rewriting of the zoning code. Resolution 2021-40 is up for, is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. And this is a moratorium on the granting of building permits for any building structure or use that would enable the construction of a billboard, not for not to exceed 180 days. Again, along the same lines with the previous one, as we rewrite the zoning code, I'll replace the moratoriums on these types of items to ensure that these all fit within our zoning. So it should say our updated zoning. And then ordinance 2021-37, amending Section 13699. This is for fair to comply with notice or neglect of maintenance, and this is an update from an ordinance where something was missed in this, and so this is just a housekeeping item to make sure that our ordinances are what they ought to be in regards to this section. And then lastly, we had a brief discussion on City Council regarding additional compensation for employees in regards to COVID sick time. The mayor had a request from the Employees Union, I believe it was, in regards to extending sick time by up to five days, and so council had a discussion about that, and we will have some legislation for that, to that effect, after the first of the year. And again, that Committee of the Whole meeting takes place following Finance, right before the start of all regularly scheduled council meetings. At this time, we'll move on with reports of council, begin this evening with Mrs. Bell Beer.
Thank you very much. First of all, I would just like to congratulate our former Finance Director and a former City Council Member, Danny Enavich. He's been a long, long while Brooklyn resident. He has a grandson that was the state running back, also named Danny, for St. Ed's High School, and that is in Division One high school football, the St. Ed Eagles, which everyone knows is one of the best high school football teams in the United States. And if anybody and everybody that knows the Enaviches, Danny and Rita, who was also our former senior center director, she passed away a few years ago, always went to their grandchildren's games, and I can only imagine Rita, the grandmother now, just beaming from heaven, looking down on this wonderful thing that has happened to her grandson. So congratulations to Danny Enavich on his grandson winning the Division State Title, helping win the Division State Title, and go St. Ed's. Once again, at this Christmas season, I'm very thankful for our, our safety forces, both fire, of course, and, and police. I walk the city a lot with my grandson, and the police force is so prevalent in our city, and I can only thank you, Chief Melkey and Chief Paul. You feel very safe. I feel very safe, and it's wonderful to see. And I appreciate all the men and women that are underneath you and who patrol. I'd like to also wish everyone a Merry Christmas. This is our last council meeting, and a Happy New Year, and I thank the Service Department for all their hard work decorating, especially the gazebo on Ridge Road. It's just absolutely beautiful. And lastly, I'd like to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to represent the citizens of Brooklyn for these past eight years. I have decided to retire. I've lived here in Brooklyn for the past 35 years, and I've raised my family here, and I will always be a proud resident. I'm looking forward to my retirement, and of course, a new set of challenges, and I thank everyone. A dear friend of mine, Father Bob from St. Bridgetts, who's an associate priest there, he's always encouraged me to retire, and he'd say to me, "Mary," he said, "you're going to be busier than, than you'll ever be." And you know, he was 100% right. I'm busier than ever, but in a great kind of way, and I thank you, residents of Brooklyn, and everyone. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell Beer. Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to say congratulations, Councilwoman Mary Bell Beer, on her retirement. I would like to say that over the years on council, we did not agree on every piece of legislation or even on the candidates running for election. However, we did end up on a good note by agreeing on a very important piece of legislation, legislation that had a lot of residents' support. Even though it was not approved by council majority, it showed, it did show where you stood on issues in keeping Brooklyn a great place to live and raise a family, and by the many dedicated years you served on City Council. I wish you all the best and hope your retirement is great and long-lasting into the future. I would like to wish all the residents and their families and friends a Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Next, close my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mrs. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. Congratulations to Mary Bell Beer on your soon-to-be official retirement when you finish your term at the end of the month. I hope you really enjoy that extra time with your grandbabies. And I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season, and I look forward to seeing you in 2022. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Thank you. First, my condolences to the Tansky family and loss of Gina's mother. Thank you to Mr. Abruzzi and Recreation Department staff for putting together the evening with Santa at Safety Town last evening. It's nice to see there are about 100 children out there. It's a good start, stepping stone to hopefully when we're talking about future events coming up. So that's, it's, it's a good thing. If you or your children couldn't be there last Thursday, Santa was driving through town with his volunteers this past Saturday and Sunday. I had the strange feeling Santa might actually be in his second career as a mailman, because I've heard of Santa going through rain and snow. I think Santa had a cold snow nose this past Saturday with the wind and the cold and everything, so... But he made his appointed rounds. In the holiday spirit, the Christmas light decorating contest is being done a little bit different this year. Residents can enter their photos to holidaylights@brooklynohio.gov. Once again, it's holidaylights@brooklynohio.gov by December 20th. This is being done just so people can get their best picture, best put forward, and their decorations. I know some of the decorations this weekend took a hit with the windstorm, but there's still a lot of them out there. Archmere, Delora, look really nice. I mean, there's the one house at the corner of Beryl and Southwood that makes some of the houses on TV look, you know, kind of bleak and dark. There's some really good stuff out there. I also want to congratulate now officially Aaron Borowski coming on to City Council, since that is all official. And I also want to congratulate Mary Bell Beer. Mrs. Bell Beer, sometimes, it's like even Kevin said, sometimes we don't agree on everything, but there's, at times, we also agreed on certain things, as Kevin mentioned with the last ordinance. I think even there's a deeper rhythm when you talk about with family, with your grandchildren, walking through the park and everything. There's, there is good stuff in common between all of us. I wish you the very best in your future endeavors. And upon that, I would just wish everybody a happy and joyful Christmas and New Years. Be me safe and peaceful, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. It's Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to offer my condolences to the Karkosiak and Blaine family on the passing of Mrs. Karkosiak, and also to the Tansky family on the passing of your mother-in-law. Longtime resident, Mr. Antonio Filiano passed away, and also Mrs. Rose Sutton, who is active at our senior center. My sympathy and prayers to all their families. Santa, as has been mentioned, Santa made his annual visit over the weekend, and I know that there were some trying conditions with the weather, especially on Saturday. I'd like to thank Mr. Wally Parker and Mr. Nick Marulis and all of our auxiliary who make this wonderful, wonderful Brooklyn tradition possible. I really appreciate it. I too saw on the news about Dan Enavich's grandson, and I remember when he was little, and they called him Danny Boy. That was his nickname. And my compliments to the Service Department for the terrific job that they did on all our Christmas decorations. They really look nice. I had my Public Management Academy graduation at CSU. It actually was delayed three times because of COVID, and we ended up having to do it on Zoom, so it was about a week ago. And I'm pleased to share that our project, Rethink Recycling, was chosen as the best project for that cohort, and it's also going to be highlighted, highlighted at the end of January at the ceremony for the Certified Public Manager Program. So that was good news for Brooklyn. And I too would like to thank Mrs. Bell Beer for her service to our community. Prior to her being on council, I had met her, but I really didn't know her that well, and it's been a pleasure getting to know her better, and I value and appreciate her support and our friendship. Mary really took the time getting to know residents, especially our seniors, and I know how important those relationships are to her and how much she enjoyed spending time with them. Mary was generous with the seniors and also with various community groups, and I know there have also been many times when she has reached out to individual residents to lend a hand. Mary, I wish you all the best in your retirement. You deserve to be able to take things at a little bit of a slower pace, enjoy your family, especially your grandson, John Paolo. And this is most likely our finally, final meeting of the year, and I'd like to thank the mayor, directors, chiefs, department heads, and all of our employees for their efforts this past year. We still had many challenges navigating COVID and its effects. In our individual roles, we're all here to do the best we can for our residents, and we have terrific employees who are dedicated and really do a great job. So thank you sincerely for all that you do for the city and our residents. And finally, I'd like to wish a Merry Christmas to our employees, our residents and their families, and I'm hopeful that 2022 will be a good year for all of us. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Not to sound redundant, but Mrs. Bell Beer, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
And also congratulations to Mr. Borowski officially. We'll be sitting right over there where you are here, coming fresh in the air. So enjoy your retirement. I know it's been a big change in the last couple of years for you and your life, but God bless you as you move on, and say thank you for your service to our city.
I appreciate it.
I've talked enough tonight, but I do want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Have a, have a safe and happy holiday with your friends and family, and do keep those in prayer that are going through a difficult time this holiday season, because there are a lot of people hurting right now. So Merry Christmas to everyone. With that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you. In addition to the condolences already stated tonight, I'd like to pass condolences to the Hammond family. Eleanor Hammond died on November 25th. She is the wife of a former police officer here, Don, as well as the mother of a former police officer, Don, as well as Dane, who used to be our rec manager, and her daughter, Deanna. So condolences to that family as well. Also, I would like to congratulate Aaron Borowski officially, so he's certified. I met with Aaron last week. He is genuine about wanting to do good things for the city, and I look forward to his service. And I also would like to congratulate Mary. Thank you for your service to Brooklyn, and enjoy your time with your family, especially your grandson. I remember you having a little baby, and I know there are a lot of work, so I remember my dad used to watch Liam, my sister's son, and he said, "I just, I'm too old for this." This is way more work than I ever remember.
It is.
So, so good for you, because I realize how much work it is to take care of a baby. I always say I can never be a stay-at-home mom. So I also would like to thank my employees. I have started performance evaluations with directors today. It's a good recap to understand really how much gets done in a year, how much is for planning the upcoming year. And I know it's not just directors, it's all the staff here, they do a terrific job, so I want to wish Merry Christmas to all the employees, as well as residents. And thank you for all of you do for our community. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two directors' reports this evening. We'll begin sitting with our Police Chief, Chief Melkey.
I just wanted to thank Santa and all his elves for this past weekend. I know how much work goes into it, specifically Mr. Parker, Nick Marulis, Andy Sellers, who's one of the elves this year, and our auxiliary, Mr. Bell Beer, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Filiano, and Mr. Bob Gerber. And thank you very much, Mrs. Bell Beer. It's been a pleasure serving with you. I always looked forward to all your phone calls, and I know this is a dumb question, but no, it never was a dumb question, and feel free to call us if you ever need us any.
Thank you, Mary.
Going forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next is our Finance Director, Mr. Raguz.
Good evening. Thank you. So I just have one item tonight in relation to ordinance number 2021-33, amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance. I just want to give an overview of what's included in the appropriation amendment. So within the general fund, the various departments in the general fund, the first department, the police department, just an overall decrease of $286,250. Much of that related to ARP funding that we received earlier this year that we shifted to a local fiscal recovery fund for, to pay personnel costs for police officers. The second item for the fire department, overall decrease of $155,400. Again, same as police department due to the ARP money received, that we shifted personal expenses from the fire department to the local fiscal recovery fund to pay, to help subsidize the general fund. The next item, within the pool, overall decrease of $70,000 related to unused funds. Most of that personnel costs related. In the senior services, increase of $12,000 for wages and benefits. That's just a, I want to, I want to mention that these are conservative not to exceed estimates. So this increase of $12,000 is just in case for healthcare, healthcare expenses related to our self-insurance portion of our healthcare claims. The next is an over, a decrease in other expenditures in the senior services of $20,000 due to unused funds. The next item in the Building Department, decrease of $30,000 in personnel due to personnel adjustments, and then an increase of $110,000 in other expenditures, much of that related to the exterior home maintenance program that we received county funding for, which we give grants to citizens to do home improvements or renovations. The next item is in the Finance Department, overall increase of $92,000, much of that related to the expenses paid to Rita. We collected more income taxes than we anticipated, so as a result of that, we owe Rita more money than we anticipated. So much of that adjustment is due to the portion that we owe Rita. The next item is related to transfers and advances, an increase of $5.8 million. Much of this is what we talked about at the Budget Work Session. This is also including the transfer and wage, transfer and advance schedule that's included within the appropriation adjustments. So the major advances or transfers that we're discussing is a $2.8 million to the City Center Fund to pay for the overages that we've encountered for the project. Another $1.4 million now to exceed amounts to the bond retirement fund to help pay for the debt service related to the City Center project, and then additional $1.5 million to the Economic Development Fund to pay for projects that are expected to be paid out in the Economic Development Fund. That was included as part of the capital budget discussion earlier this year. That concludes the general fund, overall general fund increase of $5.5 million, much of this, $5.9 million related to the transfers and advances portion. In the other funds, just an overview of the other funds, Economic Development Fund, an increase of $320,000 for land purchases and grant payments, an increase of $300,000 to the Community Development Block to pay, help pay for the Recreation Center roof of $150,000, and to also pay back an advance from the general fund last year. The CDPG fund will be paying back the general fund for the advance of $150,000 this year. And then the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, of increase of $557,600 that accounts for the ARP money that we received that we shifted to pay for personnel expenses for public safety officers. A decrease in the Federal General Forfeiture Fund of $35,000 due to unused funds. Law Enforcement Fund, increase of $30,000 for additional training and supplies. Termination Fund, increase of $15,000 due to increase in termination payouts. The next two, the Police Pension and the Fire Pension Funds, slight increases of $10,000 and $27,000 respectively due to just-in-case scenarios not to exceed amounts. Decrease of $600,000 in the Capital Improvement Fund that we discussed during the capital budget work session earlier this year. The Civic Center Fund, $26.6 million increase to account for the project as a whole. The TIF Fund, $320,000 decrease as it relates to the transfer to the bond retirement fund to pay for the debt service related to the note for the American Road Project that we took out two years ago. And then in the Popus Fund, the last one I want to touch on, the Popus Fund, an increase of $25,000 due to additional training and supplies. There were also adjustments made to the transfers and advances schedules. Much of this is in regards to our deposit funds. We do our annual reconciliation for our deposit funds, and these funds were not verified. We sent out letters to the vendors or the contractors or the individuals who put deposits down with the city. We notified them that these monies were not returned. The ones who were not, who did not reply to that, saying that their funds want to be reset to them, we then take this money and transfer it back to the general fund as unused. And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for going through that, Mr. Raguz. I appreciate it. All right, we'll now move on with our legislation for this evening. The first item we have is a council confirmation for the appointment of Karam Hasrani, excuse me, to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term expiring December 31st, 2026. I'll make a motion that council confirm.
Counsel confirm. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Benkirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
And Andy Silver.
Yes.
Thank you.
The first item up for a vote this evening is Resolution 2021-37. This is extending a moratorium imposed by Resolution 2020-10 and 2021-13 on the granting of building permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the construction of storage units or self-service storage facilities for a period not to exceed 180 days in declaring an emergency. Additional comments or questions?
Move to adopt?
Okay.
To adopt. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Benkirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Silver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2021-33, amending ordinance 2020-47 entitled an ordinance to make appropriations for current and other expenditures of the city of Brooklyn, state of Ohio, for the period January 1 to December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency. This is the ordinance that Mr. Raguz was just referencing. We do need to amend this this evening, so I will make a motion that council make the amended changes based upon the report given by Mr. Raguz a moment ago.
Second.
To amend, Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Benkirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Silver.
Yes.
Introduce files, suspend the rules as amended?
Okay.
To suspend the rules, Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Benkirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Silver.
Yes.
To adopt. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Benkirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Silver.
Yes.
Thank you.
And all that information that Mr. Raguz just
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Andy Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you.
And all that information that Mr. Regus just discussed, as well as all the rest of the information regarding the appropriations for 2021, are available on board docs underneath that ordinance. Ordinance 2021-34 is up for a third reading and adoption. This is to make appropriations for current and other expenditures of the city of Brooklyn for the period January 1 to December 31, 2022. Any comments or questions on this?
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Andy Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2021-35 is up for a third reading and adoption, amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2020-48, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, administrative employees, non-bargaining agreement of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. Any comments or questions on this? Move to approve?
Second.
To approve. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Andy Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 2021-38 is on first reading but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. Approving the application of the city of Brooklyn to apply for Community Development Block Grant Funds, the John M. Coyne Recreation Center, Markhor Park Improvements, Phase Two, and declaring an emergency. Comments or questions? Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
So.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Andy Sellers?
Yes.
To adopt. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Andy Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution 2021-39. This is a resolution to honor and recognize Mary Bellbeer for her service to the city of Brooklyn, and so I'm going to read some of the items that's inside of this piece of legislation, and I'll spare you all the whereas is inside of this. But Mary Bellbeer has served as a council member of the city of Brooklyn from January 1, 2014 through December 30 of 2021. As her time on council, Mrs. Bellbeer served on the Public Safety and Environmental Committee, and also as a representative to other committees and boards, most notably Legislative Update, and as the council's school board representative. Council Bellbeer also represented the city of Brooklyn and took on issues that they believed in. Mrs. Bellbeer has been a longtime and active member in various city groups such as the St. Thomas Moore School, food donations for service department organizations and giveaways, an advocate for her Tremont neighborhood she grew up in, and is the owner-operator of her family's longtime business, Sokolowskis. Her faith also plays a very important role in her life. She was even honored by being the Pope. Family is everything to her. Her husband, Ron, son Joe, daughter Katie, and grandson John will enjoy the extra time that she will have to spend with them. So once again, Mrs. Bellbeer, congratulations. Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Well, I'll abstain. Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Andy Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a copy for that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair. Every council member who abstains from the vote must explain why she...
Believe it or not, I am somewhat humble.
I believe she abstained because it was...
That's satisfactory.
Name it to the law director over there. All right, very good. All right, Resolution 2021-40. This is on first reading but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is placing a moratorium on granting of building permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the construction of billboards for a period not to exceed 180 days from the effective date of the resolution. Any comments or questions?
Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.